Order the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Wednesday, January the 19th. If you would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and after the pledge, please remain standing. We'll be laying prayer this evening by Joanna Morris, Greek Coordinator for a new hospice. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Father, how grateful we are that you know us and that you see our hearts and love us still. We thank you, Father, for each person here who has dedicated their time and lives to serve the city of Greenwood. Father, I thank you for the things that will be deliberated this evening. I pray that your spirit and your grace would be evident. Thank you, Father. For Jesus' sake, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call. Present. Here.
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 Yes.
Here.
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 We do have a quorum. Just a note, Mr. Middleton and Mr. Williams are attending tonight's meeting virtually. And just so everybody knows, there will be a Republican caucus in February the 3rd, Thursday, here in the council chambers. And they should, that night, choose a replacement to the council for Mr. Dine. So at our first meeting in February, which will be February the 7th, we should have a full nine-member council at that time. So just so you know. All of you should receive copies of the minutes from the January 5th meeting. Do I have a motion? That's a motion, Mr. Bates, second. Second by Ms. Gibson. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, then roll call of the minutes.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Um.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
I am standing.
Middleton.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye.
Minutes are approved on a vote of seven to zero with one abstention. Reports, Corporation Council.
Both the I-DAN semi-monthly and the I-DAN semi-annual reports should be added to SharePoint. If you have any questions, please contact Ms. Coons, who prepared both reports.
All right. Anything to control at this time?
Not at this time.
Any other committee or board reports? I think I sent all of you an email. The last RDC meeting was postponed. And I think we'll be doing that this week from today. Is that right?
Yes.
I believe it's a week from today. It'll be a virtual meeting. So just so you know. And then after that, I'll send you a report, let you know. Any other committee or board reports?
We did have our first plan commission. We, two things that we did. Number one, they selected officers. Number two, they discussed an item that's on the agenda.
All right. All right.
That has to do with that.
That exception?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Any other reports? All right. This is an opportunity for members of the public that wish to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. So if you're here tonight, wish to speak to the council, or online, online speak up, state your name and address for the record. If you're here, step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. There is a five-minute time limit. So if anyone... All right. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. There are none under notice but considered or first reading. First ordinance is under second reading, ordinance number 2155.
An ordinance vacating platted and a portion of platted ingress egress easement located within the Crescent South Business Center, Section 1, Block 3, sponsored by Dine.
Have a motion?
Form a motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Signal Mr. Hopper. Any discussion, questions from the council? Hearing none, then roll call, second reading, ordinance 2155.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Ordinance 2155 passes second reading, eight to zero. A new business introduction of new ordinances and resolutions, ordinance number 2201.
An ordinance to reestablish agreement Cube of Capital Development Fund pursuant to Indiana Code, Section 36915.5, sponsored by Gibson and Bates.
Good evening. This is one of our annual things that we do. Every year, as our assessed value grows, they adjust the Cube Cap Development Rate in order to keep it at the five cent per $100 assessed value maximum. We have to reestablish it every year. On the positive news side, there is something going through the State House now with the DLGS bill that might eliminate that requirement and let us keep it where we put it. But until then, we do need to reestablish it again for...
All right. Any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bates. A resolution, 2201.
A resolution of agreement common council to adopt the written fiscal plan for the annexation of approximately 67.2 acres located south of County Line Road and Long Combs Road, referencing annexation ordinance number 2202, sponsored by Hopper.
Mr. Bates.
Thank you. With every annexation that we do, we have to prepare a fiscal plan to demonstrate our ability to serve the new development. So there is an annexation being heard next. What I'm talking about is just simply the money, the fiscal numbers. The biggest point I'll just pull out is on page 28 of the fiscal plan itself. That's projected to, this is projected to show positive balance in every year for the city and for the school system and for the library. So the doubt in this fiscal plan clearly says that you are agreeing with staffs now. It's not saying whether I support the annexation or not. This is fulfilling our statutory obligation to analyze these financials. So with that, we are showing a projected balance after four years of $984,000. Now, this is based on numbers that were provided to us by the petitioner. So the real assessed values may be slightly different than what was provided, but this is the best information we can. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I have a question. This is the zoning on annexation is two different types, RMC and AG. Is there a reason for all not being just one?
So in order to get continuity, the, sure, our petitioner will think of this more. They had to annex a field adjacent to that to get enough continuity with the city. The owner of that field was willing to participate in the utilities across that property, but there's no development plan for that field at this time. So it will be coming into the city as an add. And to buy them coming into the city as an add, they're actually locked into their old county tax rates. So it's, it doesn't really impact that property that much to give continuity.
All right. Yeah, that answers my question. Any other questions from the council? All right. Thank you. And next ordinance, number 2202.
An ordinance annexing certain territory contiguous to the city of Greenwood, Indiana, placing it within the corporate boundaries and making it a part of the city of Greenwood, and redefining the corporate boundaries of the city in Greenwood, Indiana, to include approximately 67.2 acres located in the area of East County Line Road and North Combs Road, of various owners, sponsored by Hopper.
All right. This is scheduled for a public hearing tonight. So we will open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against ordinance 2202, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Would you like to wait for the petitioner to speak?
Sorry?
I said, would you like to wait for the petitioner?
Yeah, you can wait till, yeah. Might be more appropriate. Anyone wishing to speak for or against ordinance 2202? Seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing. The petitioner's here. You're welcome to have the podium. State your name and address, please, for the record.
I'm Jake, this is in with Prosper and Todd, the attorney of the act of the petitioner. Petitioner here as well. We'll speak, you know, I'll speak generally about it. We've achieved one inch continuity as was mentioned earlier for the annexation of some adjacent fields. The overall project involves six parcels near Combs Road and County Line Road. The overall project anticipates on two of those parcels developing multi-family development. It applies to nearby parcels to those, also developing assisted living development across the field parcels that were also, that were also proposed to be annexed to achieve continuity of the utilities that will be running along County Line Road there to serve the development parcels. If you're quite pace here, sit, wait, or present a little bit on the development itself. Good evening. Good evening. Like, based at Floyd, 900 Springs, streets out of Jerseville, Indiana. First off, thank you so much for entertaining our petition tonight. We look forward to presenting and to be a part of the city of Greenwood. You can see we have our development identified out here. We have 17 buildings, which will be about 408 units. It'll be a restored style clubhouse. Am I allowed to come up there to turn? So we have the two developments on here. Just checking to see. So County Line Roads, Combs Road. And we have a suggestion for us for annexation to be multi-family and assisted living. We have 17 buildings here placed out spaciously throughout there and having the parking requirements as well. We have, again, a first-class, I say, clubhouse, pool, and quite a few amenities in the area. The assisted living is a 131-unit, 116, 115 member care. It's a three-story facility, and we're very proud of it. It's a, it's a good facility to have. As you can see here, elevation of our typical building, it's all a maintenance-free exterior. We have brick on the first floor. We have cement board on second and third, which is kind of commonly called as your party plank on there. So we do not use any vinyl siding whatsoever. Class A will not allow us to do that. So really nice facade. It has a great breezeway in it, balconies, railings. So we're really pleased with the venue, how it presents itself. As you can see, for our clubhouse, we have a nice, cool setting, a lot of amenities around it, the chairs, the pergolas, the putt putt golf on there, fire pits, some cabanas. So we really look into it because we want to make sure it's an offering that would justify having such an annexation out there. We're looking for the class A facility. The floor we have right here is an illustration of how we do our layout, our clubhouse. It's about a 5,000 square foot clubhouse. It's not a small clubhouse. It's really a lot to do with it. You can see our layout on here. Again, we have pavers, so just exposed concrete. We have cabanas. We have the way that the landscaping's done. We have, again, we try to make the fire pits so it's a community gathering. It's just not one small fire pit. We make it long so that everybody can be a part of an area and they enjoy themselves out there. Again, putt putt green. We just wanted to give them some amenity that happens. The other part is, we keep our pool open year-round. It's a heated pool. We want to have that availability. We think it's neat with what we do. As you can see, this is a rendering of our clubhouse. The palm trees are not going to be put at this location. So, but we do put this exact clubhouse in several of our Florida locations. So it's not just something that we're going to just place here and not be worthy of the city of Greenwood. We've put a lot into this. It works really well in our areas that we have. Like I said, Jacksonville, Louisville, we're starting to get ready on Nashville. And we know, excuse me, we want to be here as well. We have a sun shade. We have a lot of decking on it. We have a lot of gathering. We have, this is a rec room for the clubhouse. It's where you can go and exercise. It's a overhead store. We open it up. And just again, we use community. We like to be a part of the community. So that's it in a nutshell. Like I said, 17 buildings for 8 units. The assisted living, 131, 116 assisted and 15 member care. So, sorry. Yeah, anything else? Yeah, I would, I think would, going through this proposed process here for annexation, the Greenwood comprehensive plan really contemplates this area where this is going to be located is an area for development with Greenwood. It's a target area for annexation within, identified within the comprehensive plan. And it does contemplate multi-family developments such as this to continue to support the growth that the Indianapolis Metropolitan Area is experiencing. It's something that, you know, when the comprehensive plan was put together, it foresaw. And, you know, a project like this and this annex and proposed annexation is a building of what those goals are set forth in that plan. And one final comment, you mentioned, Camp, about the other two parcels. We've been speaking to them the entire time. That's the Clemms and the Macarons, very considerate friends. And they were very conscientious to make sure that they stay agriculture because that's what they want to be. They want to stay there. So that's why it was not so. They want to be, make sure that everyone understood that.
All right. Any questions from the council?
I know this is just for the annexation, but what was the...
The Plan Commission, what was the vote from the Plan Commission?
It doesn't say.
It has dead of the Plan Commission. It will be going next week.
Sorry.
It has not gone to the Plan Commission yet. It goes next week. They weren't to meet the timeline.
Okay. So it'll be before the Plan Commission at the next week? Well, we're just starting the process. So that's, you know, they're just trying to, trying to get it all as quickly as possible. Sure. All right. Any other questions from the council? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on, ordinance number 2203.
An ordinance, ordinance basic and private ingress egress easement and five-way journey to utility easement in Saturn Park, Lots A1 and A2, Block A, sponsored by Campbell.
Anyone want to talk to us about this? All right. Moving on, resolution 2202.
A resolution declaring certain personal property, machinery, and equipment for tax abatement as for Sarnova HC LLC, sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Anybody want to talk to us about this?
Yes. Hello, council members. Amanda Rubidoo, Vice President of Economic Development for Aspire Johnson County. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Brian Ellis, COO of Sarnova. And Brooke Wallace is also on from, she is the Corporate Controller of Sarnova. They'll be giving you a little overview of the company, but they are requesting a three-year personal property tax abatement. They're considering a 208,000 square foot portion of 1003 Collins Road. They're looking at a, an investment of 8.5 million and adding 33 employees. Brian?
Thanks, Amanda. And thanks, thanks to the council for your time this evening. I'd like to start by giving you an overview of our company, Sarnova. Sarnova is made up of four companies. There's Boundary Medical, Trianum Health, Emergency Medical Products, and Cardiac Response. Three of the companies would exist in this facility in Greenwood. Boundary Medical, we are a provider of medical products to first responders and EMS companies, and one of the market leaders in this space. Trianum Health is a specialty distributor of anesthesia and respiratory products. And Emergency Medical Products is an e-commerce solution for medical products, and we service EMS companies through this venue. And then also, we support schools and a few other channels that need these types of products. The reason why we are interested in Greenwood, we've been going through what's called, we call our supply chain network and optimizing and retrofitting existing facilities or finding other spaces, new facilities, and signing leases in certain markets. We will sign three new leases this year. We signed a new lease in the Dallas-Fort Worth marketplace. We signed a new lease in the Jacksonville, Florida marketplace, and then are interested in Greenwood, Indiana, just to be our solution for the Midwest. As, as was mentioned before, we are bringing, I'm sorry, first, I'd like to talk about the markets that we evaluated in the Midwest. We had six markets within four states that we looked at. And our, and Greenwood is where we would like to, to operate the business. And as was mentioned before, we will be bringing 33 new associates into this area. We will be closing two facilities and the associates that are currently working in those facilities. And again, these are those roles. We don't anticipate that the associates will be moving to a great extent. There may be a handful, but not very many. But again, adding these 33 roles into this marketplace at an average of value per hour, or what we are paying per labor hour of $23. And again, that's a mixture of management and hourly labor. But because we are required, we have certain restrictions in the, in the products that we do distribute, certain requirements from a regulatory standpoint. We are higher than probably what most typical warehouse employees in our, in our hourly wage rate that we provide. And so our lowest hourly wage rate will probably be in the $16.50 range. But again, the average wage for all associates that are coming into the, into the facility would be roughly that $23 per hour range. Those were the main points that I wanted to share with you, and I'm open to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Any questions?
I don't know. We heard the presentation at our quasi-RDC meeting on Tuesday, and you may have noticed that we were in favor of the project.
It's just, in case you missed it, it's a three-year abatement, which is shorter than normal. So, any other questions or any questions?
Location.
Sir?
Collins Road.
Collins Road. All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Resolution 2202. That's what we just did. Resolution 2203.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council opposing legislation regarding the business personal property tax, sponsored by Campbell.
Right.
Good evening. So if you've had a chance to look at the resolution, what we're looking at is currently there are two bills going through the State House, House Bill 1002 and Senate Bill 378. Both of them are opposing changes to how business personal property taxes are assessed within the state of Indiana. The Senator in Indiana Municipalities, who does a lot of work on behalf of cities and towns, is working with a coalition of other groups, schools, libraries, counties, to oppose doing these without fully replacing the revenues. And the reason we are really looking at that... Hey, Rob, I need to bring up the presentation. The reason we're looking at doing it that way is because in Indiana, where property tax system works, those taxes would still be assessed. They just wouldn't be assessed on the business personal property. I put it on the folder on the presentation. So what, what we're really looking at here is for for all of us with just the city of Greenwood, we're looking at there being a total impact. The business personal property makes up about 11.28% of our property taxes assessments. So from that, rather than it being assessed to the businesses, it's going to get assessed on residences and on real property. So we will still be assessing those taxes, but it will be paid by the real property, which for the most part is residential. You can see for, for the city, that 1% is 1.22 billion and then the 3%, which would be the commercial and industrial is 1.138. So the big chunk would be just on residential. So what that means is we would have a lot more circuit breaker impacts. We would definitely see losses. But we're not the only ones affected, obviously. Greenwood schools would be affected. 96 and a half percent of the effect would come from within Greenwood City limits, which is why I won't present that to this council because the area that you all cover would be definitely affecting this. They're looking at as much as nine and a quarter percent levy impact, but pleasant 13% levy impact, of which 81% falls within our city limits. And then center growth, three and a half percent impact, of which 38% falls within Greenwood City limits. So it wouldn't just be city tax bills that would be affected by this. It would be every single taxing unit causing an impact on this, which pushes up the overall tax rate on every single taxpayer, which pushes up the circuit breaker impacts we're all seeing, the losses we're seeing. So what AIM is proposing and pushing is a replace, build, erase campaign so that we are pushing for, if the state legislator sees fit to push through a business personal property tax change that they will replace with a permanent revenue source, those dollars so that they are not assessed onto our residences and onto all of the real property taxpayers and pushing up the property tax rates. So that is what we're really doing with this is supporting that AIM campaign. One thing that we do want to point out is that Indiana is consistently ranked in the top 10 for business tax climate already. In fact, we are ranked number one in property tax. In fact, we are ranked number one in property taxation system in the entire country. So there's not necessarily a need for this to happen, but what we do want to make clear to our legislators is that if they feel like it needs to happen, then we need something to replace those dollars rather than pushing it onto the residents. So I am also going to ask that you consider suspending rules through the second reading tonight on this resolution so that we can get to the State House and to AIM so we can push that message out as well.
I saw both. Just a second. Couple things. Just want to clarify, they, they want to eliminate the business personal property tax, which right now is all being paid by businesses.
Well, they want to change the system. Right now, there is a, what they call a floor, which basically says, no matter how long you've had that business personal property operating there, you can't depreciate it completely down to zero and not pay any money, which with federal taxes, you can't depreciate your equipment over X amount of years and say, well, now it no longer has any use and I don't have to pay taxes on it. So they want to eliminate that floor. So as that equipment gets to age, it would age out of the tax. Additionally, one of the bills is proposing, proposing a business personal property tax holiday where anything bought in twenty-twenty-three would get no business personal property tax ever assessed on it. The, the history on this is that a couple of years ago, they passed a, a bill that would allow the county councils to eliminate business personal property in their county. Nobody took that, that bill basically. So now they're coming back and trying to then push it across the entire state since none of the counties would take on that.
Basically, they want to, any change they make is going to increase taxes paid by, by local citizens.
Yes.
And so, and I know one of the options they considered is a local income tax, which again is a tax on people, not on corporations. And then right now, the tax is all being paid by corporations. So I, I think it's a bad idea. But anyways.
We do too. We don't want this to go through, but if, if we just say no, anything, we don't get a spot at the table to negotiate it.
Yeah, I understand.
We're trying to say, at least find us somewhere.
Yeah. And just, this is probably more for legal, but on the one, two, three, four, five, six, there's a, the six whereas clause. The second line, it says property owners playing. I believe it should be paying.
That's correct.
Do we need to make a motion to?
Yes. There's actually two. There's also, it says, please qualify of life in eleven, the eleventh whereas clause, treat quality.
Okay. So we have a, most of my Mr. Bates to amend Resolution twenty-two oh three to change the plane, the pain, and the qualified equality. Okay. Now a second, Mr. Lexie. Any discussion? Roll call on the amendment to Resolution twenty-two oh three.
Campbell.
I.
Gibson. I. Bill.
I.
Hopper. Lexie.
I.
Bellton.
I.
Williams.
I.
And Bates.
I.
Resolution twenty-two oh three is amended, a vote eight to zero. Mr. Bates has made a motion to suspend the rules through first reading. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on suspension? And then in roll call on the suspension of the rules through first reading on Resolution twenty-two oh three.
Gibson. I. Bill.
I.
Hopper.
I.
Lexie.
I.
Bellton.
I.
Williams.
I.
Bates.
I.
And Campbell.
All right. Resolution twenty-two, two oh three as amended. The rules have been suspended through first reading. Do I have a motion on Resolution twenty-two oh three as amended for first reading? Motion by Ms. Gibson. Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion? And then in roll call, Resolution twenty-two oh three as amended, first reading.
Hill.
I.
Hopper.
I.
Lexie.
All right.
Bellton.
I.
Williams.
I.
Bates.
I.
Campbell.
I.
I.
Resolution twenty-two oh three is amended, has been passed first reading, eight to zero, but I have a motion for second reading. So motion by Mr. Bates, second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion? Roll call, second reading, Resolution twenty-two oh three as amended. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The motion was to suspend the rules through second reading. Not, so we have a motion by Mr. Bates, second by Ms. Gibson. Roll call and suspension through second reading.
Hopper.
I.
Lexie.
I.
Bellton.
I.
Williams.
I.
Bates.
I.
Campbell.
I.
Gibson. I. And Hill.
Rules are suspended on Resolution twenty-two oh three through second reading. Now motion for second reading of twenty-two oh three as amended. Mr. Hopper makes the motion, second by Mr. Lexie. Any discussion?
I have a quick question. Both bills been heard in committee. The first one, House Bill one thousand and two from Representative Brown has gone through ways of meetings already and is going to go to the full house. The other one has been to the Senate, but it has been held for voting. So it hasn't been voted on.
Didn't the governor say he would not support the bill that didn't have replacement included? Wasn't that?
Well, the, the House Bill one thousand and two has a portion that is replaced. And I think that's the local income tax that President Campbell talked about. But again, that's not one that necessarily is going to keep up with the needs for the way that the property taxes.
All right. Any other questions? And then in roll call, Resolution twenty-two oh three is amended, second reading.
Lexie.
I.
Bellton.
I.
Williams.
I.
Bates.
I.
Campbell.
I.
Gibson.
I.
Dale.
I.
Resolution twenty-two oh three is amended, passes second reading, eight to zero.
Keep you updated on where this goes.
Thank you very much. All right. Miscellaneous business. This is the second opportunity for members of the public to address the council, this time concerning items not on the agenda. Some of you here tonight who wish to address the council, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. If you're online, feel free to speak up. Give us your name and address. Anyone? All right. Hearing none. Then moving on, council. Couple things. Council appointments. We, the last council meeting, we were, Mr. Lexie was not able to be here. We were unsure if he wanted to continue on the Johnson County Wastewater Treatment Board. I'm so longed in. And he, he is willing to do that. Do I have a nomination? Nomination by Ms. Gibson, second by Mr. Bates. Any other nominations? Hearing none, then we'll close nominations. All in favor, Mr. Lexie, say aye.
I.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Mr. Lexie.
You're welcome.
The Fire Merritt Board is, you all know, our appointee Bill Welch was passed away and we give our condolences to his family. He did a fine job. We appreciate the work that he's done. I sent an email out to you all saying that Steve Daunt is interested. He is a former Greenwood fireman and a former Greenwood fire chief. Currently heads up a sales team for Motorola and he is interested and he's, I've known Steve for a number of years and I would recommend him and I know that the fire chief, Chief Hoggatt does as well. So I would entertain a motion to nominate Steve Daunt to the Fire Merritt Board. Motion by Ms. Gibson. Do I have a second? Second. Second by Mr. Bates. Just for the record, Mr. Welch's appointment expires in February twenty-twenty-five. And so this would be to fill that, the current term until twenty-twenty-five. Remember, we just created the Fire Merritt Board a couple of years ago, and when we did, we staggered the original appointees. Matt Holmes is the Democrat appointee to that board, and his term will expire February of next year. So just so you all know. All right. We have a motion. I'm sorry. Motion, who makes it motion? Ms. Gibson, the second. Mr. Hopper. I'm sorry, I got sidetracked.
Was the first hand, second.
I apologize, Mr. Hopper. You have to speak up. So all in favor of Mr. Daunt, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing opposition, Mr. Daunt is appointed, appointed to the Fire Merritt Board of Indiana State. At our last council meeting, we failed to elect a council vice president. So we're going to attempt that one more time, at least tonight. Do I have any nominations for council vice president? All right. We have Ms. Gibson. Do I have a second on that? Second. Second by Mr. Lexie. Any other nominations for council vice president? All right. Hearing none. Then we'll close nominations. All in favor of Ms. Gibson, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Hearing none. Ms. Gibson is elected unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you. All right. Any other miscellaneous visits from the council?
Oh, Mr. Preston, I have something. Not this last weekend, but the weekend before when we had the college football championship here in Indianapolis. We had almost sixty aircraft that came in just for that at the airport. The staff out there, you should be very proud of it because they worked better than twelve hours in that horrible cold fueling planes and they just, the airport needs to be committed for their, their work.
Thank you for letting us know. I knew they were busy, but still realize that, that made it. Yeah. All right. Anything else from the council? All right. Hearing none. Anything from the corporation council?
Nothing further.
Anything from the controller? Anything from the mayor?
None.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.